Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out. It's a dangerous time. We're going to open the public hearing tonight for the 2020-21 budget. The public hearing will stay open until Friday at four o'clock, 4:00 PM. You can call in if you have any questions or make comments. You can write us, and we will read all and take all into consideration. So tried to keep this open as long as we could. We put an advertisement in not quite in time, two weeks ago, I believe. And so everyone have a little additional time, since they having a public hearing without the public is a little contradicting. But so anyway, that's where we're at with that. So anyone that has questions out there, you can, if you have concerns, call or, like I said, write, email whatever is best for you by Friday at 4:00 PM. So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the budget.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to meet on Friday to close it?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
I guess we would.
Or leave it up to the water. Can you leave it up till next Tuesday? We have a meeting next Tuesday.
No, I think she's got it. We have to, Michelle, fight a little. I mean, I'm fine to come in Friday at four if you want to just do it fast.
All right. Well, at the end we'll go.
I find myself a lot of free time as well.
We can go in and just do that?
I'm good.
I can do that.
Okay. We'll coordinate. Okay.
So they haven't changed the dates?
Not that I know of.
Or just get a little cushion?
No. Everything else is going along as?
As is.
Elections and stuff have changed.
Right.
But.
That's what I thought maybe.
Yeah. Now I haven't heard anything about public, about budgets. I mean, they recommended trying to, if you can, and have the capabilities, to have actually being filmed where people can call in and you can have face-to-face, kind of virtual meeting.
Virtual public meeting?
Yeah. But really have a kind of capability to.
Thank God.
And this is probably about as many people as you would get at the meeting.
Same turnout.
Okay, so Friday, Thursday, four o'clock.
What's that?
Friday, four?
Yeah.
Four, okay.
What time works? Is four okay?
Friday one?
Or four thirty?
Four.
Four thirty is better for me.
Okay.
I think the notice said that it was at four o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah, we have to do it after four. Oh, well, I guess we can close it in.
I thought the notice said that it was going to close at four o'clock.
Yeah, that's what it, yeah.
So I guess we gotta come at four.
So we just need a quorum, right?
Yeah.
We just need a quorum.
Well, I'll do my best to get here much more. I think I can do it.
I'll definitely be able to.
Okay. Good point, Marie. Thank you. Okay, while we're waiting for the public questions to stream in, we'll go do some little business here. Resolution 06-2020, declaring village-owned property as surplus. I know we agreed and talked about this piece of property in the corner of Healy and Moffett last meeting. Jeff did a little digging and there needed to be a resolution declaring that the property was not needed. So that's what we're doing tonight before we go to the next step. So. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 06-2020, declaring the village-owned property as surplus.
Second.
We have a roll call on that?
You're not going to read it?
If you'd like, because we have some time on our hands. I'll read your story, Michael. It's going to be beautiful.
It's what we usually do.
It's going to be beautiful. It's going to be probably the best thing I've ever read. It's going to be wonderful.
In the history of the country.
Yeah. Resolution, Village Board trustees determining that property owned by the village is no longer needed for municipal purposes. The following resolution was offered by Mayor Morandi for adoption, seconded by trustee Early to wit. Whereas, the village of Goldspring owns property located at the intersection of Moffett and Healy Roads consisting of two tax lots, section forty-nine point six, block one, lot eleven, consisting of point three-one acres in the village of Nelsonville, and section four nine point six, block two, lot twenty, consisting of point six-seven acres in the town of Philistine. Whereas, the property was purchased by the village of Goldspring in 1966 in order for the village to connect.
Mike Turten's out there.
What's that?
Mike Turten's out there. Sorry to interrupt.
No.
It was the press. You don't want to turn it on my way.
No, no. They can be harsh. They've been nasty to me. Very bad, very bad.
Really? You're not responding frankly to that?
No. Not being nice to me. No, they do. They're always nice to me.
They better be. They better be.
Thank you. If not, I'm sending you after.
That's wrong.
Michael, you still with us? Okay. Looked like you were zoning out. I just wanted to make sure.
No more than usual, David.
Oh, okay. Maybe some masks thrown.
We don't really, really look at it now.
You show up, Michael. Great.
You're over there in the middle.
The fist PC on our side.
Better.
Just don't read on my space, please.
Okay, we open the public hearing at, for your application, at seven o'clock. And now we're on number one of our agenda, the Resolution 06-2020. There's a motion passed. I made a motion. Trustee Early seconded, and we're now reading it. We were at the second whereas, the property was purchased by the village of Goldspring in 1966 in order for the village to connect to New York City Aqueduct for emergency watersort if the need ever arose. And whereas, since the purchase of property, the village has constructed a separate emergency connection to the aqueduct, thus making unnecessary the need of the village to utilize the property as intended. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved, the village-owned property identified as tax lot forty-nine point six dash one dash eleven and forty-nine point six dash two dash twenty is no longer needed for municipal purposes, and resolved that the village board of trustees hereby declares that the village-owned property located at the intersection of Moffett and Healy Roads is identified as tax lots forty-nine point six dash one dash eleven and forty-nine point six dash two dash twenty to be surplus.
Ready? Okay. Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Villada?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Aye, oh, yes. Okay, let's see. One thing I did read, there was one letter, public comment. So I'll read that. We'll go back to the public hearings for the budget. This is from Daniel Rhodes on Ford New Street. I'm concerned that the village is looking to take the budget in the wrong direction by increasing it to the maximum extent possible. The latest unemployment figures have shown that six point six million people have lost their jobs in the last week, ten million in the last two weeks. This number will only increase in the '08-'09 recession. This weekly figure never crossed the one million threshold. We are heading for the worst economic event in anyone's lifetime. In the community of Goldspring, you should be saving what they can now for economic collapse that is at our doorstep. To expect that the members of the community of Goldspring that participate in the private sector workforce will be able to float an increased budget is a fantasy. We all need to tighten our belts and be ready to do without. Daniel Rhodes, Ford. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Moving along, we have a correspondence. One's request to purchase village-owned property at 212 Main Street. That's at the corner of Orchard and Main, the north side. Marie's been in contact with the owner. Marie, would you like to comment?
Yes. Tanya Brennan had sent us a letter in 2015 asking to purchase the property. We spoke with her last week, and she has sent a new email to the village extending the request to include the retaining wall. So the request for the property will be from the current southern boundary of the property to the southern, to the point south of the retaining wall.
There is a map in here, everyone, I think.
I provided her the process that we follow. And if the village were approved, the idea of selling the property to her, Jeff will send her a letter which identifies the price per square foot, the materials that she needs to provide, the escrow amount she needs to provide, et cetera. And she has agreed to that.
Is this, I admit I haven't walked up there to see it, but I'm looking on Google Maps. Is this the yellow house?
No.
No.
It's the gray house.
It's the corner house.
It's the gray house.
The North West corner.
With the overhanging porch.
Right, okay. So that's a Main Street address.
Is it? Or is it?
I don't know.
Well, they're calling it Main Street in the request.
The front door is a Main Street.
Okay. That definitely confused me because it looks like a, is she, we, are we going to require her to, I know she's going to maintain the retaining wall. We're going to require her to keep it as it is, stone or whatever we're going to do when we repair our piece of it, or is she going to be able to at another time just put a concrete wall there or something else?
She buys it and turns.
Well, I think we might be able to make a stipulation in the thing, yeah.
I don't know. What do we, what do we going?
That it would be replaced as?
It is.
As it looks.
As it is, or, you know, as close as existing or, you know?
Sturdier but looking the same.
Because it connects with the other wall.
Right, that's, yeah. Well, we're going to repair a piece of that.
I don't know why she wouldn't.
We're going to repair a piece of that, right down farther?
Just down a little bit farther, not on her property.
As stone, the way it is?
Yeah, we're intending on doing that. It's the next property down, the Mirpool.
Yeah, that was, that was my question, if I made it clear. If it's going to be stone over there, and if she gets to a point where she has to repair it and just decides, you know, cement or concrete wall would be less expensive or sturdier or whatever.
Luckily, her size is a lot lower than the other two.
Stone-faced.
I think that's a good point. I would, I'm for selling it. Our porch is already, as you can see, on the property, bisecting pretty much. So I'm definitely for selling.
I mean, definitely for selling it to lessen the stone wall that we own.
So I'll see if we can, if we can add, if we can put that in. Or can we talk to you? Would you ask her that? Or we can put it and tell her we, you know, don't want some faux stone there or who knows what, the red stone that we sing around, cultured stone, whatever. So I don't need, do we need a, we don't need to do anything right now, right?
How long does the board is in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Okay, so moving ahead along. Next is just a notification from Clearwater. They're suspending sailing this season, since we do have some time on our hands. Hello, Jeff. In case you haven't, have not heard, I wanted to take the time to touch base with you on the board of the village of Goldspring. At this time, primarily due to school closures and statewide restrictions on social gatherings, Clearwater has suspended sailing season until further notice. Unfortunately, this impacts the organization in other ways that have included furloughs and layoffs. I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know that we are grateful for our docking application date is being approved. However, at this time, we won't be able to bring the boat to the dock in the near future. Please let me know if there's anything we need to do or do on our end to confirm this. Stay healthy and safe. Old business discussion, discussion on paying employees during COVID-19 pandemic. One of the things that I, I had a little conference call today with Jeff and Michelle. One thing she was saying, like, for the crossing guards, they could collect unemployment. She said she would suggest us paying them instead of going that route because it's basically the same amount of money. And she thought it was much cleaner to do it that way. I forget how it was calculated, but the way the calculations are for this, not the usual way, I think they're different now. You have to pay a little hundred percent of what they were making. So as far as those people go, that's how that would work. I talked to Jeff regarding Anne and her work. He's been working it out so that they're, one of them's in the building at a time. There's plenty of work for her to do. We're coming into the water billing season. And also, there's a lot of filing that we've been putting off or whatever that he's been organizing for her to do. So she has work to do, if she's willing to come in. And Jeff is working it so he's not in the office at the same time, or in the building, actually. So the, I think that just leaves Kathy, who, you know, don't know her that well.
Courts are canceled.
What's that?
Courts are canceled.
Courts were canceled, so I'm not sure exactly.
She was in here yesterday, because I interviewed her yesterday. I don't know for how long, but I know she was here for a while.
I don't know how, anything else. Everything else is essential. People are working, highway's working, police are working. I don't know if that'll change. If we made a decision now, though, it could affect that, you know?
If we say we're paying, say, for example, you know, if someone's out at this point, highway, they're not going to take the time out of their, whatever you call the days off, that I forget. So we're not going to require them to take the sick time. We're going to pay them.
The vaca, I think that, I think another governor, one of his newer, what was it? Declarations or whatever they're called, was that you would, they're extending the vaca, not vacations, but I guess sick time by fourteen days. So whatever they have now, I think is extended fourteen more days.
Is that just for people who get sick?
For people who get sick.
So in other words, they're not taking their time from their?
Right. They're not losing their time.
Which, okay. I mean, I'm.
And I think that one has to affect this, I think, this week.
I mean, I'm fine with paying them.
Yeah, it's already in the budget. It's already happening. I mean, we don't get any work out of it, but it's, it's not going to hurt us.
I guess it did come down to, like, highway, having them not be able to work. They could collect unemployment. And so what Michelle is saying, they would be saving a hundred percent anyway, so.
Some might, we should just pay them, yeah.
Yep. And, you know, you might lose one of them during that process, too, if you're lame somehow through this.
Kind of continuing that, we've had forty, plus forty applications for the, for the chop for, for highway.
They keep popping up in my home computer because I have subscriptions to these job offer things. It comes with spam now or whatever. It says, "Dolge Goldspring, need the labor," and it keeps coming up like that. I'd never seen anything that we had advertised before on this site.
Right.
I don't know. We're doing different, but it's clearly going out to a lot of people.
Yeah. Yeah, we've gotten them as far north and south, Westchester and Orange County, Dutchess County.
And people are out of work, so.
Yeah. Well, this was kind of before it hit, too, though. We had quite a few before the last two weeks. We kept it open for quite a while. Okay, so back to the requests. I heard everyone but Marie, where are we at with the, with the paying?
I went down to Tom, came across unemployment. He had a second job.
Tom, school crossing guard, Tom?
Tom Hare.
Okay. So we're just, Michelle said we should pay them regular anyway, right? School crossing guard.
That's what she, that was her recommendation. Well, I'll make a motion. We can vote on it as well. I'll make a motion to pay the employees during COVID-19 pandemic as per our budgeted amounts. What's I get there?
So the budgeted amounts took into account.
What's that? Sorry.
The budgeted amounts took into account the days the halving was closed. So they had a week off of spring break. I think last week was the, there were a couple of teachers' conferences that were scheduled. So what would be the pay? Would the pay?
What do we usually pay them?
We don't pay them when halving is not in session.
So that, that would be what we would do, I think, don't pay them.
And so?
As if it were the regular, as if they were working regularly.
So then the.
Okay, let's rephrase the, the.
Yes, exactly.
So how would you like to phrase that, to corroborate?
For the crossing guards, they would be paid for the dates where halving was scheduled to be in session.
For our agreement with them already?
Right.
You're still second.
Yep. I'm still second. Unless you want to take this one.
Okay. So is that, that's the, okay. Does it have a second from Steve? Are you good with that, Michael? Or is that too convoluted, or you need something better? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of bills?
Okay. Marie, there was one that you need to sign that didn't get signed. Anyway, I moved to approve batch number fifty-five eighteen for a total amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and eleven cents.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval of minutes, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I missed the lot that week.
What's that?
I said I missed the lot that week.
Okay, so we have one extension.
Yep.
And the next is March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. I'll make a motion to accept, to approve the JSE workshop meeting on that date.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, were you at that meeting?
I was absent as well, but I'm here today, in case you want to make a note of that.
I'm grinning here.
So we'll jump back to the budget now that that's done. Like I said, we were, we did talk, I talked to Michelle today with Jeff, and it was mainly a concern of having, you know, how things are going to, you know, roll if things get worse. And we, and say taxes don't come in, although we're going to be receiving them from, you know, Putnam County reimburses us. How long will that take? Who knows how the flow is going to go here? Who knows how the flow is going to go, and maybe it'll be an indication for the water bills if that's, you know, people are really hurting, how many people pay that or don't pay. So, you know, I guess we, I went over the revenue, the revenue that we're going to be losing. Pretty much, we'll be losing, I think, an average of six thousand on tax tickets and traffic violation, you know, what we get from the courts a month. So depends on how long that lasts. We're probably two months into that now, or at least one month. The parking lot, that's how much, like, at least a thou, two thousand a month?
Probably one point five in April, two to three in May.
And then probably.
And March was probably lost about five hundred.
Right.
So what is, I didn't follow. What is the average amount? We're losing a month on the parking lot?
Yeah.
So in the wintertime, it's about five to seven hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
March, it starts to come out, and it's about between seven hundred and a thousand. I think it was closer to five hundred for March. April is between fifteen and two, and we're not going to make, I doubt that we'll make two hundred dollars. May, I would look for three thousand. It depends on what happens. Right now, we're shut down until April twenty-ninth. Who knows when someone's going to take off the stay at home?
Okay.
But the total for the year is what? Just the total of twenty-two?
I think in the budget, it was something like twenty-two. It's probably going to be down about a thousand dollars. We had a good year.
Right.
But it's going to be down.
Right. Okay. But looking forward, that's probably, it looks like we're going to be definitely losing two, three months of that. Well, I guess going into the new season.
Tonight.
Could be, I don't know.
It depends on what.
Yes, what happens, yeah. So possibility of losing that money. What else is there? I don't know what other revenues we have. Well, if C Street doesn't come, depending on what happens. I mean, I think the conversation was the what-ifs and where we're going to be. And we could lose, you know, there's probably sixty thousand dollars you could come up with. We wouldn't be, you know, we're going to lose, like, say, three thousand dollars on events. We're going to lose twenty thousand plus on C Street. We're going to lose twenty-something on parking.
C Street comes in October.
October, November.
I mean, I mean, it's just a possibility. I'm not saying we will.
Potential.
Hopefully, we don't go that far. I think the economy will collapse.
I won't be living here anymore if that's the case.
The mayor's park event?
Yeah, the fees for mayor's park or the doxide.
So we're talking, I mean, we're going to lose more at the tail end of this year, I think, than this budget.
Maybe.
Why, why would you think?
Well, this budget ends May. This is.
Oh, sorry, it's twenty, nineteen seventy. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the two thousand twenty. We're going to be down.
Yeah. So what we expect to have?
In terms of reimbursement for subsidy taxes, that gets up to the county in January. So if people don't pay, we lose half a year of that.
Right.
Of that income, and then.
Right.
The water bills are going out, what, next week? So that's an indication of where people stand.
We do have enough money in the budget, the way it is now. I mean, we just, we won't purchase any of the big items. There's like the money for a dump truck, there's whatever, the money, the big ticket items where that we're going to.
Yeah, we'll leave it in the budget, but just not.
But leave it on, and we can transfer it.
Just don't worry. I mean, some of the other stuff, some of the other stuff Michelle had mentioned.
What's that?
Posing.
Posing.
Right.
Yes, the state's being paused. Some of the other things Michelle had mentioned, I'm trying to remember. Like lobby furniture, we don't need things like.
How long would you like for that? We need that, yeah.
We need that.
They just defer, defer the purchase to see.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll leave them in the budget and then don't act on them until we see.
Right.
I think Jeff said pretty much by the end of June, we usually have a feel for the flow of people paying taxes. Usually by the end of June, we have about eighty percent.
Oh, yeah.
I think we should have an idea.
I don't know what else. Is there anything you can dig up from that?
It's for the budget? No.
But I think, and I think the reason is to kind of max it out is we don't know where we're going to be, so.
What is the other doing with people? Are people getting sick? Are the police getting sick?
I haven't heard anything from them. No, and I've been, I've. I know they got some, from Putnam County, they got some masks, some masks that, then some others left. Got some sanitizing, a jug of whatever, don't know. And gloves. So they did get some. I think they got, you know, a decent amount of masks, which surprised that. We requested the same thing. They didn't get any, so we got gloves.
I think the fire, fire company got masks.
Did they?
Last week, we were talking to Steve at a, last week, and he said they had gotten a box of masks.
I guess we haven't been nice, so we don't get any masks.
Yeah, because we don't need them.
Village Board.
They just pass over them.
We're expendable.
There's three of us that are susceptible, and then I want to hear.
Oh, and the old people list.
I do say I like it because I can go to Foodtown early. I can use my age for the perk. Mike, do you go there early?
Coffee only during that period.
Where are you getting your coffee these days in the morning?
B and L.
Taking a ride, huh?
I did talk to, yesterday, Richard Shea and I talked to, I guess he's Lieutenant Commissioner or Vice Commissioner Eric Coolsey from Parks. And they've agreed to, they're going to limit park, decrease parking availability. So where Little Stony Point is along Nine D, that's going to be closed. The parking lot will be open still. I think there's thirty-six parking spots there. So they've decreased that. They, they're going to also do that north of, north of Breakneck. It's going to be parallel parking on the, on the east side.
They're not enforcing that.
Well, they didn't put it into effect yet.
Oh, they haven't?
No, I thought they did.
They just closed the lot off.
According to them last, I talked to them yesterday. I thought it was in effect, too, because they didn't affect, they definitely didn't do it last weekend, so.
No, not at all.
They just had the lot roped up.
That's the only things they were, they were doing, to limit. And that's all I got. Anything else?
Yes, the next code update meeting?
Yeah, when does, do they want to? I mean, we can reach for that. I don't have a problem with it. We could.
Next week?
We can meet Friday after, after the meeting, if you're on. Oh, it's good Friday, yes.
Sorry.
Every Friday's a good Friday.
It is, yes.
Next week? Next Wednesday? Or we're meeting Tuesday, right?
Are we bringing?
Yeah, we're going to do a monthly meeting.
Are we bringing people in for their reports? Are they just going to?
No, I'm not going to bring them in.
So they're just going to give us a report?
Yeah.
And they don't have to come up?
Yeah. Also, I believe that the, the garbage truck has been totaled by the insurance company.
Oh, they did?
I think so.
I can fix that. Just get a new, new housing for it.
Cab and.
Pop it on. You're good to go. Sam and I were inspecting it last weekend.
Sam and I were inspecting it last weekend for it, yeah.
Sam, no problem.
We were underneath there checking the frame and everything, and Sam said it looked pretty straight. So.
But we covered on that, 'cause that's a pretty old truck, right?
Yeah, we're covered on it, but I don't know if we're gonna get for it.
Can I have the air horn off?
It's ninety-four.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I was looking at the insurance.
Well, the numbers are next meeting, but they're not gonna put it in. I think from Jeff's quick research, I think they're like over two hundred thousand. Two hundred, two hundred and two forty.
That's what Otis had three weeks ago, or whenever, our last meeting.
Do we get used ones or old, you know? Some of the other municipalities are passing down.
You can, but I don't know what the, I know there is.
They run those things till they fall apart.
Yeah, it would not. It's not something you wanna borrow. It's like borrowing a used mask.
I quickly breezed through the insurance.
You gotta use garbage truck.
Basically, I quickly breezed through the insurance, and what I saw was, we have, you know, they'll replace it. For a new one, if the vehicle is ten years or less old than that, ending that, it's just whatever we're covered for. I don't know what we're covered for, for that.
They'll probably give us five thousand bucks for that. Something crazy like that.
Oh, is it? It's like thirty years old.
I'll tell you.
Forty years old or so.
Anything else from anyone on anything?
Next code update meeting.
Oh, next code update meeting. Everyone's taking short-term memory, Marie.
Yeah.
When would anyone, is everyone fine with doing that? Do you wanna do that? Do you?
Can we do it like midday, or is that not good for anybody?
Whenever it works for everyone, I guess.
Midday does not work for me. We've got this thing going, so. But later in the day, usually I'm done by about four, so.
Well, that's right at dinnertime.
What's that?
That's right at dinnertime.
Like after?
Yeah, so we'll go back to.
What time? Six?
Six.
Six good or not? You tell me, I don't care.
I like six-thirty better.
Okay, there's one for six-thirty.
I'll do, I'll do whatever.
Yeah. Larry's still working from home, and she has a lot of clients around that time. And Wednesday, I think I have to make dinner and everything, so.
Okay, so Wednesday's six-thirty?
What's today?
What date is that?
Fifteen.
Thank you. At six-thirty?
And the meeting, and what about the, our regular meeting, which should be shorter, 'cause we're not gonna have people here and not much? Should we meet a little early for that one? Can we meet at six-thirty for that one too?
I'm good at six.
For next Tuesday at six-thirty. So that's three meetings to remember.
What's the third one?
Friday.
Oh, it's Friday, yeah.
Fourth.
I do have, one other thing, luckily I had it written down. As you know, and I'm not sure, what was Mr. Santos's name, first name?
Darren.
Darren.
What is it?
Darren.
Darren. Passed away from, from the virus, from what I heard anyway, I'm not sure if that's positive. Anyway, the, with the water bills coming up, their, their, their cost is two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents for this quarter. And I would, I would like to make a recommendation to, to waive that.
Fine.
For at least that quarter.
Definitely.
I think it's a small thing, but it's a family that has survived one disaster after another. Incredibly horrible.
I agree.
So I'll make a motion to waive the, the water, what is the order fee for the Santos family for this quarter? Or for which, what is it, the last quarter? Whatever quarter will be billed for.
Those that are coming up, well, yeah. The ones that are coming up next week. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Since she lives two doors away from me, can I just write her a note to let her know?
Oh, sure, definitely. Unfortunately, and one of the side effects on this there is that they're, they're having a funeral, I think, Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Basically, they're driving by the church. They kinda have this service at the church. They're gonna scoop the loop, I guess. I guess it must be something, but I, you know, they love the village, so they're gonna scoop the loop. And then if anybody wants to pay respect, you, you, they're gonna line up Peak Skill Road on the sides of the road. And no one's supposed to be getting out of their car. And I don't know what the service is like at the, at the cemetery, probably just for family, if, if that, so.
When is it?
I think it's.
It's Thursday at twelve. They said they'll line up no later than twelve forty-five on Peak Skill and on Bank, they said. I'm trying to figure out how they're gonna do that, but. And then I guess the service in the cemetery is at one o'clock for the family, ten people.
I saw a service at the funeral on the other day, and I was quite surprised by that.
In Goldspring?
Yes. I think it was on Tuesday. No, it was Tuesday, it was last Friday or Thursday. Lot of cars out front, and everybody dressed up for it, and they were going to the funeral home. I was very surprised by that.
They were going in?
Yeah. Well, I don't know, it looked like it. I didn't, I didn't go stick around. Everybody was there at the funeral.
New laws for a social gathering, or now a thousand dollar fine?
I, I'd heard something about someplace letting two people in at a time to, to visit, but I don't. I know, I know it wasn't Santos.
I thought funeral homes were closed as well. I mean, you could get cremated at this point. That's what happened with the, that works for me. Johnny's mom passed away over the weekend. And they're not, they're not, they can't do anything except cremate her. Which I think is what she wanted anyway, so, you know, but they can't have a funeral or a service or anything for, till this whole thing blows over. And I thought that was just kinda how it was everywhere, but.
And one last thing, Ed Clary, who's been part of the community for as long back as I can remember, as long as Marie can remember also. And so, yeah, he passed away, so condolences to his family. I think Marie remembers when he was working for Nate Glick, and I remember when he took over Nate Glick's, and he was the mayor for a while, right? Was he the mayor of Nelsonville or not?
I think so.
When did he pass away?
What's that?
When did he pass away?
Nelsonville.
Don't know.
Yeah.
With this week's, I mean, not this week, this is only one day in this week, so it was recently.
Yeah, 'cause he used to be the liaison for the seniors, right?
Yeah, he's the liaison. He was, he worked with the seniors for as long as I can remember. And he also did the ceremony during Memorial Day. I think he opened that up.
He was the Nelsonville mayor, right?
He is the Nelsonville mayor, yeah. And probably, trust me, who knows what else he's got up there. You know, he's been involved with, with the community for a long time. Nice guy, definitely worked a lot with the seniors in getting them services. You make condolences to that family also. I, I don't think it was related to the virus. I'm not, don't quote me on that. I don't. So sad time, crazy time. Everybody stay well, and we will see everybody on, on Friday for a little bit. So I'll make a motion to adjourn. Or if there's any questions, sorry, Mike?
On the payment to employees, that includes the court clerk, right?
What's that? Yes.
And any progress at all on the short-term rentals, or is that?
I just had a, sent a long email to our building code enforcer regarding that, and I have to follow up with that. But I have that at least one complaint, and I, it's gonna, we're gonna move ahead. I, it's, there's people coming in and out, and I, I'm not happy with that. I don't know if anyone else is. I bet the second, second group next, next door to me, I don't know who's coming in, they're coming to get away from something, whatever they're bringing to rent whoever, whoever these rentals are, so.
Not the time for that.
So looking at our code, maybe Marie, if, if everyone looked at our code, see how you interpret it, the way I'm looking at the code. Short-term rental would fall under, well, a tourist home falls under hotels. It says, it says, you know, for the definition of hotels in chapter one thirty-four, there's a definition for hotels, and it says tourist homes fall under that. Then if you follow down, it says a tourist home, and there's a definition for that, which is, it says three rooms that are used for accommodations. So I'm not sure what three rooms means, if you wanted to go that route, whether it means three bedrooms or, or, or three rooms. Then it goes down that you can have, in R1, you can have, if you have a special use permit, you can have a short-term rental there, but it has to be on a state road. And that's the only things I could find in there, which would seem to me, my.
Your current.
That, that they're not allowed, and it seems like the code enforcer, Greg, doesn't agree with that. He doesn't think we have, I don't know, that it's not clear enough. And I would argue that it's very clear, so. If anyone wants to take a look at those, I think it's one thirty-four and then I forget, one thirty-seven is.
I think it's.
Sixteen. One thirty-four sixteen.
One thirty-four, one thirty-four seven, and then one thirty-four sixteen.
Right.
Regardless, you need a special permit.
Right, yeah.
And none of them issue.
Right, exactly. But either way, and then if three, then if you even got that far, and it was three rooms, what does that mean? If it were three bedrooms? How would you interpret that?
Given that it was, I think it's B and B, tourist, tourist home, it would be three bedrooms.
Well, it was just under tourist home, we would've mentioned that. It said no more than three rooms. I think in the hotel definition, it was three or more rooms. I, I don't know.
A hotel is defined as three rooms, right.
If it's a hotel, I don't know how that three-room thing works with someone that has a hotel.
Three or more.
So to answer your question, yes, working on it and whatever, getting sucked into everything else and.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Be safe, stay healthy.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. The Friday meeting? We have to close the, the hearing for all of the budget.
So comments are open before.